This meeting is called to order. Emergency city council meeting regarding the COVID-19 response by the city of Lock Cabin. Let us know how close to the phone. Use them while we get ready here. Every time she gets in, that's when it does it. Turn it slightly. Down just a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, is that better? Okay, we're getting them.
Go ahead.
All right. The city council of the city of Lock Cabin is meeting an emergency session, March 24, 2020, at 3:00 PM at Lock Cabin City Hall, 14387 Alamo Road, Lock Cabin, Texas, in regard to COVID-19 response by the city of Lock Cabin. If a closed session is necessary, the meeting will be reopened after the closed session. The subjects to be discussed or considered upon which any formal action is to be taken are on the agenda. These items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on the agenda. Roll call. Jennifer Williams?
Here.
Jessica Abbey?
Here.
Rodney Allen?
Present.
David Campos?
Here.
John Perkins?
Here.
David Campos?
Here.
I got you, hold on a second. Let the record reflect that David Campos was joining the meeting by telephone due to concerns about the COVID-19 virus and his current health status. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge is that we continue to fight of the United States of America and to uphold our rights and freedoms, law, nation, under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all. We ask you, O Father, that you will guide our thoughts and our actions this day as we consider things that concern this city. We ask all these things in your name.
Amen.
The meeting today is being hosted on YouTube at the city of Lock Cabin. Citizens are being provided an opportunity to submit questions via text. If you're watching on YouTube, you can text 903-875-6501. Please provide your first and last name and then pose your question. These questions will be addressed at the end of our meeting. The meeting is specifically an emergency meeting, and that means that we have to, there are certain things because of this COVID virus that we have to address as a council, and that's why it's an emergency meeting. The first order of business is to renew the city of Lock Cabin Declaration of Local Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency, which I signed into effect last week. This morning, the Court of Commissioners renewed their declaration and signed it into effect. So we are doing the same thing today. I think you all have a copy of that. And, which I don't have. Okay, I'm going to read this because many of our citizens haven't seen it or heard exactly what it had to say. So I'm going to read what we are proposing that the council adopt this today. I could only do it for seven days, now the council knows that. City of Lock Cabin Declaration of Local Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency. Whereas the World Health Organization has declared the coronavirus, now designated COVID-19 as a global pandemic on March 11, 2020, and whereas COVID-19 was first detected in Wuhan, China in December 2019, and whereas symptoms of COVID-19 can range from mild to severe illness and cause further complications including death, and whereas the COVID-19 virus mainly spreads between people who are in close contact with one another through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes, and whereas the continued worldwide spread of COVID-19 presents an imminent threat of widespread illness which requires emergency action for the protection of the people of the city of Lock Cabin, and whereas the implementation of mitigation strategies can slow the transmission of the disease, and whereas the Small Business Association has designated COVID-19 as a qualifying event for the provision of economic injury disaster loans for businesses and private nonprofits in affected communities, whereas this declaration activates the city's emergency management plan, and whereas the mayor of the city of Lock Cabin has determined that extraordinary measures must be taken to mitigate the effects of this public health emergency and to facilitate the efficient, rapid, and cooperative response to the emergency. Therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Lock Cabin that a local state of disaster is hereby declared for the city of Lock Cabin pursuant to 418.108A of the Texas Government Code. The state of disaster shall continue from the date of this declaration until the city council of the city of Lock Cabin takes further action pursuant to 418.108B of the government code. This declaration of a local state of disaster shall be given prompt and general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the city secretary pursuant to 418.1018B of the government code. This declaration of a local state of disaster activates the city of Lock Cabin emergency plan pursuant to 418.018B of the government code. This declaration adopts and incorporates fully the governor's executive order GA-08 and any and all amendments or subsequent orders related thereto. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 418.173, any violation of the declaration may be punishable as a Class C misdemeanor with a fine not to exceed $500. This declaration shall take effect immediately from and after its issuance. So I'm asking for the council to give me a motion to accept this declaration.
Do we have like an end date for it?
No. It is in effect until further action by the council. That way we won't have to meet every 14 or every seven days.
So it's currently in effect indefinitely until we...
It is indefinite until...
We choose to...
Until we choose to change it. And because things are changing so rapidly, if we accept it just as it is with an end date, even if something happens between then, we're still going to have to meet an emergency session to get that to...
Does anybody know what the governor's executive order TA018 is?
Yes, I have the orders. Do you have a copy there?
I mean, just the Reader's Digest.
Yes, there's the Reader's Digest. It's got the 4.0... Oh, that's... That's just tangible. Yeah. We have so many things to take...
We have no need.
Here we go. I got it. I got it. All right. I will read you what those orders are. It contains four orders. Order number one says, "In accordance with the guidelines from the president and the CDC, every person in Texas shall avoid social gatherings in groups of more than 10 people." Order number two says, "In accordance with the guidelines from the president and the CDC, people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms or massage parlors, provided however that the use of drive-through pickup or delivery options is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the limited duration of this executive order." Order number three, "In accordance with the guidelines from the president and the CDC, people shall not visit nursing homes or retirement or long-term care facilities unless to provide critical medical assistance." Order number four, "In accordance with the guidelines from the president and CDC, schools shall temporarily close."
Okay, thank you.
That's what that is.
I have a question, Nancy. Is there still going to be a bathroom here next weekend?
No.
The April 4th, whatever it is?
No, it was, it has been postponed indefinitely. We have, we are, this past weekend, we canceled a wedding at the Red Barn. We have asked the church not to have, because it is a public facility, they're renting from us, we've asked them not to answer there because it would be violating the 10 people in close proximity. We have not closed our park. Parks have not been closed by these orders, so our park is not closed. I know that we have had fishing tournaments, but those people are not in confined space yet, and it's not been an issue yet for us. But I want you to know that these are issues that this council needs to consider. A little bit later on, I'm going to ask you to consider what kind of strategies we need to put into place. We know, we know from what we've heard that this is going to probably be at least a three month process, not longer. We don't know. We don't know that, and it's the unknown that's so got me stretched. But the first thing we need to do is to get this declaration in place so that we can continue to do the other emergency things that we need to do. This is really alerting the public to the fact that we know that there's a pandemic out there and that we're going to do everything we can to mitigate what happens, that we're going to do everything in our power to keep our citizens safe. That's my job, is the health and safety of this community. That's what I'm asking for you to do today, is to help me do that.
Okay, well then I make a motion to approve the declaration of local disaster due to public health emergency for the city of Lock Cabin.
I'll second it. Okay, motion is made by Jessica, seconded by Jennifer, that we adopt this declaration of local disaster. Any other discussion?
I mean, I think we need to make it plain to the citizens, I mean, you can get out of your house and, you know, walk your dog or...
Yeah, they're not staying in place most of the time.
No, there is none.
I've studied first.
There is none yet.
Right.
When there is one, we will let people know.
Right.
Okay, everything else? Okay, we have a motion on the table and been seconded, all in favor. David?
All in favor, I'm in favor.
Okay. A unanimous decision that has been adopted. I'll ask you all for your signatures on this document. Okay, next order of business.
Nancy, before you go on, we've had a comment that it kind of sounds like we're under water, so...
It's real garbly, yeah. They can't hear.
Just maybe, the only thing I know to do is speak more slowly and enunciate.
I don't think there's anything that we could do. It's probably best to just...
Late Charlie Brown, I'm watching Charlie Brown.
Okay, I don't know what we can do. This is really our test drive of this system, so suggestions are helpful, people out there watching, let us know. Yep, we're going to look at getting a camera to help do this. Okay, the next order of business is the 2020 election. It has been strongly suggested that all of the May 2 elections be postponed until the November cycle. I spoke with our attorney today and asked him about the procedure for doing that. We would need to, because we called the election with an ordinance, we would need to pass another ordinance postponing it until November. I would like, I'd like your input at this point, and then we'll see what we want to do. It is, what happens in this instance is that if we wait till November, the current members remain on the council until November, until the November election, and then it becomes a short term for those people who are elected, and we go back to the regular schedule of having our elections in May. Make sense? And if we go to the November cycle, that also is the presidential, that's the big election, so we would be on that same ballot. We would be put on that same ballot. We probably would have to contract with the county to get us on that ballot. We would not have the election here at City Hall. We would go to one of those other designated places like County City for our election. And of course, the reason for us doing that would be because of the close proximity thing that we're dealing with right now, and the safety of our citizens and our staff. Nobody has any feelings. It's my recommendation as the mayor, that after lots of consideration, at first I was very reluctant to do that, just because we're such a small community and sometimes the feelings run very strong here about what we do here, that it be just us. And, but after listening to all of the things about flattening the curve and not exposing people and knowing people like David who are not supposed to be getting out and getting around people like that, that maybe it's in our best interest to do it. So that would be my recommendation.
I understand what you're saying. Believe me, especially in my field, but as few people that come in, I don't feel that... I mean, so we let one person at a time? I don't know, I... I don't know.
Well, so we let that one person at a time come in and sanitize after each person comes in.
How many people do we usually get to show up for an election?
Twenty, forty, fifty.
Over... If we do that, then we have to have the early voting, which is, what, 10 days?
Yeah, it's a four-week cycle.
Yep, starting on the 20th.
I'm not sure having it on May 2nd is appropriate. I don't think pushing it all the way to November...
We don't have a choice. We don't have a choice.
So it's one or the other?
We don't have, yes, because I asked that question. We don't have a choice. It has to be one of the general...
General, primary election.
General, yes, general election. General election cycle is what they call it. So we, if you want to think about it further, and I'm going to suggest that we have a meeting, a special meeting next week, and then we can consider it at that time, we would have All I'm thinking, all I'm also thinking is that if we have a like now, a stay in place order come out between now and then, what are we going to do?
I mean, at that point, we have no choice but to reschedule, but, I mean, I get what you're saying, I do.
Make a motion, we table it.
Table it till next week.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to table the discussion about the 2020 election until our next meeting. All in favor? David, are you in?
In favor, aye.
Okay. Motion is passed, we will table that till the next meeting. The next two items on here are our strategy for next steps scenarios and a plan for the 12 weeks that I'm thinking that this is going to last at least that long. I just want, I'm going to need from you, the council, some ideas, some suggestions about how we need to handle things. When, when things come down from the county, because we are basically under the emergency management team of the county, and when things come down from the county, at this point in time, I don't have input from you. I don't have a way of getting input, I guess I'm, I'm inputting, but, so one of the things I'd like for us to think about is, what could we put in, what kind of a plan could we put in place so that everybody knows what's going on, and I can get your input in a timely manner? And that would mean probably the same day that we put, you know, that I need input. How can we do that? How can, how can, what can we do to do that? Suggestions?
You can always call me, or me anyway, but I also check my emails quite often every day and my texts, so...
Is that what you're talking about? Are you talking about us coming together once a week and talking?
I don't think that, at this point, I think that we need to come together at least every two weeks until things settle down, so that we can operate the city. I mean, we didn't have our last meeting where we should have discussed business, and we didn't do that. And, so one of the things that I, is the next thing on the agenda, is continuing holding regular scheduled meetings. And we can do that, now that we've got our YouTube channel, we could do that, and our citizens can participate and know. So we would have to know from you what your schedules are, so that we could just, we'll just set a schedule for, say, the next couple meetings.
Well, what I can say right now is like, I don't know what the school has in place for our kids, and we won't know that until either for Friday or Monday as to the schedules they're going to make for our kids. Like I've talked to three different teachers today and an assistant principal today, and they don't know exactly how everything's going to work yet, and we won't know until Friday. So I can't tell you what our schedule's going to be. What I can tell you is that the county is allowing us to be home with our kids, for us to teach our kids from home, but I'm also going to have to be a band teacher, I'm going to have to be a musician teacher, I'm going to have to be an athletic director and a coach, because my kids are going to have to log all their stuff. So I don't know what my schedule's going to be yet until Friday.
I think schools might be out for a year as far as they go.
That's very possible, that's what they were telling me today, it's very possible that they may be out, unless for too much, but we won't know how, what their curriculum or how they're going to do anything yet, probably until Friday. And that's in effect to everybody that has kids in the city.
Okay.
Why don't you wait until Monday, get everybody's info, when somebody's available, and then schedule another meeting.
I'm sorry, we can talk about it at the next week's meeting.
Okay.
Give us a better time, because see, my job tomorrow, they're making huge changes, so I may not be working, so I...
So you don't know what there is?
I won't, right, I don't know a lot yet.
See how difficult this is?
Right, and there could be more orders. I mean, there's several counties today that have done things, so I think that as far as a good way to get together, our discussion should be discussed at next meeting.
Okay. Do you think we're able to set a time for next week's meeting?
You can set it, and then it may be amended.
Well...
Or you can wait till Monday.
Because we have to do the 72-hour, the 72-hour thing, so that it...
I don't have anything planned next week.
So we find out Friday what schools are going to do?
Well, it could be Monday, because I did say Thursday.
Set it for Thursday.
I would say, let's set it for Thursday next week, and even if we set it for 5:00 or 5:30, I mean, that way it's after, for sure, everybody's off of work and we don't have school stuff going on.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, is everybody agreeable next Thursday?
Five thirty?
5:30? Five thirty?
And it's the date?
That's the second.
The second. And, just to tie in with that, the executive order that Governor Abbott put into effect expires on the 4th, so something may happen between now and then also with regard to the state, so, yes, very fluid. Okay, go. We're setting our next meeting for next Thursday, the 2nd, at 5:30. And at that time, you'll also have a chance to think about what kind of strategy. One of the things that is on my mind is how do we inform our community, our city, our citizens about what's happening here? How do we keep them... How do we keep them informed? So I need some suggestions.
Send it out with the water bill.
Send it out with the water bill? That only goes out once a month? What happens if something happens next week?
Yeah.
To let them know, what do we do? So, think about it, think about it. Those are things on my mind right now. Let's go on. We have had some questions about the water bills. Do we have to, um... Does the council want to waive late fees and extension fees? Does the council want to adopt an emergency policy and not turn water services off or not payment?
My, my biggest concern is that, is that people will take advantage of it. Yeah, and I'm not for, it may be one thing on late fees, but I'm not for, I mean, I, I understand that there might be some hardship cases, but we, we need some proof and understanding of what's going on. I'm not gonna just take half the citizens in law cabin's work if they can't pay their water bill.
I would agree with that.
Right. Jobs have, you know...
I mean, I...
They're still working or whatever, and they have to, a lot of people that are on social security, they're getting their checks.
They're still getting their checks.
Yeah, uh, annuity, so you, you're exactly right. There'll be people trying to take advantage of it, perhaps.
I mean, if there is somebody that has lost their job.
On occasion, by case.
Usually, yes, do it on a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis, yeah.
Well, that's kind of what our, our water department has been waiting for, um, for some direction. And, uh, we don't think that during these times that, um, we should be turning people's water off. And that would be just an emergency policy that we can consider again at our next meeting. But it's something that we need to consider, um, if, if we are, if, if we come under a stay-at-home order, you know, that maybe we'll need to put that into effect if people can't go to work. They can't, um, can't do that. But, but some of, some of the, the reasons have been, well, I have to stay home and take care of my kids. Well, does that mean that the city can't pay their bills because, because of that? So there's, there's a waterfall effect. So, um, one of the things that, if, if people are watching right now, I'm gonna suggest that they contact the water department, um, at City Hall to discuss if they are having some kind of a hardship. They need to discuss it with us and let us know. And again, it will be on a case-by-case basis. It's not, um, uh, one of the questions that at least I had was, um, how about extension fees? If they want to, right now, there's an extension fee if they want to go beyond the twenty-first and keep the water. Do you want to waive that fee?
Un- until there is an order that makes us stay at home and not leave, I don't think that we need, because I, I just, I unfortunately see it being taken advantage of. I mean, how much are the extension fees?
Thirty, thirty-five dollars.
And they extend it until...
And how long?
It extends it to the first of the month. In addition, they're paying a twenty-five dollar late fee.
And then they're turning around and they're doing...
Probably their water bill.
Yeah.
And then they turn around and they're doing again on the tenth, so...
Right, and, and so we don't want, we really don't want this like a snowball effect and so that you would never be able to pay your water bill.
We're not a financial institution. Yeah, I, I think we need to keep a, as much as we can policies in order, okay?
Until, now, once they make us stay at home and not leave, and then things might need to change, so...
Then, then we could call another emergency meeting and we could put a policy into effect. Okay, shall we just table this until that time? Take a mo- make a motion now.
I make a motion that we table the water bills, extension fees, and etc.
Second.
Any other discussions? All in favor? David, are you an aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next item, um, is regarding spending for the city. Because we have, we are losing revenue because we've had lots of vast tournaments canceled. We have had, um, we are canceling red barn activities, so we're not getting those, that income. The office staff, uh, and I are, are going to be asking that we not do, that we can, that we don't spend, spend ourselves off existence, that we watch what we spend. So some things that may have been approved in the budget, like, um, lawn mowers and, uh, things of that nature, even though at, at this date, we may have that money in our coffers, just because we can spend that money if we have equipment that's already running and we can get by, that's what we want to do.
Sure.
So we want to be sure that you are behind us in, in doing that. Okay.
Are we still, excuse me, are we still making payments on police vehicles or...
Yes.
Uh, it is possible to contact the bank and ask them for an extension, like, waive a couple of payments to the end of the loan if it comes to that.
Well, we could do that. We, we are able to make...
That's, that's an option, if, if it is a vote.
Right.
I don't know exactly what other obligations we have, payments from banks, is that about it as far as, um...
Well, we have our, we have our, our lawn payments, I mean, our sewer lawn payments.
Sure, yeah, okay.
We have two, we have two of those. Um, and we, um, we have a police car on order that we're gonna have to... Get along for. Um, so, uh, but, but as far as, um, one of, one of the things that we haven't had in the past is someone who could fix things for us. And now we have Donald on staff and he can fix just about anything. Um, and so we're trying to, uh, deter people from spending what, what used to have to be spent because we didn't have somebody who would not do stuff, so, um... So, we're just... It's common sense, you're right. Okay. Um, we really don't have to do anything, that was just informational. The next thing is something that, that, um, we have been, uh, exploring with Verizon, in changing our telephone system and our internet, uh, to, to Verizon from CenturyLink. So we have, we have in front of us a proposal, um, that I'd just like for you to take and we'll discuss it at our next meeting, but I want you to have it ahead of time. It would, this proposal, and I haven't really, it just came, but, uh, it appears that we would be able to cut our telephone internet expense in half. And it would also bring our, our systems up to date. We have really old, old equipment. It would allow us to expand in the future. So if you will take a look at, at these at your...
What do we know about Verizon Internet and how good it is here?
Belinda? Well...
Yeah, we, we've got a lot of it right now. We've been experimenting with it for a week. So far, it's better uploading and downloading speeds than our current system. So far, we haven't had any issues with it.
Is wireless?
It's wireless.
We, we get the key.
Can, can with what extreme is on there, see?
CenturyLink's a lot better than that other one that goes out all the time, Suddenlink.
Suddenlink.
Suddenlink's awful.
Yeah, we've done it.
I don't have any problems with CenturyLink, so...
I hate it, but CenturyLink, um, Suddenlink's ten times better.
Operator error. Okay, so we'll table the vo- yeah. I'll make a motion. We table the Verizon proposal till next week. Second.
I got a question. Do we get to keep the same city phone numbers or would it change?
Yes, the phone num- the phone numbers stay the same. Um...
Are we in a contract with CenturyLink?
No. No, we're on monthly. Any other discussion about that? We have a motion on the table to table this item till next week. All in favor? David, are you in favor?
In favor.
Okay. Motion's passed. Um, I think we, um, City Park is on here because we had an inquiry about, um, because, um, because students are out of school right now, if we would consider allowing them to go to the park without paying fees.
My kids aren't going anywhere. That's my opinion.
Well, that's exactly how...
Yeah, but you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna keep them from doing it. I mean, they're already doing it.
I would rather my kids go down and go fishing or hang out there, down there, than to be breaking into people's homes and vandalizing and, because that's what's gonna start happening because our kids have nothing to do. And ask the parents to don't pay attention to them now. But I'm not saying, I'm just, I was just gonna take my dogs down there this weekend just to let them run around and just to get out of the house, but... No, I'm not saying, I'm saying, I'm not saying that there needs to be eighty-five people down there. If there was a bunch of people, then no, it wouldn't, to keep the, the... I don't see a problem with anybody going fishing or...
How many you can enforce? How many you can enforce? If you say, no, they've got, yeah, they've gotta pay to go down there, how in the world are you gonna enforce it?
Well, I said, that has been, that has been the case all along.
Technically, they don't start charging till May anyway.
Well, there's nobody, there's nobody there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so technically, I mean, people have gone down there all these other years before May without being charged.
Right, and even after May. I mean, there are kids that go down there all the time, sneak in. And, but, um, I've had, I've had a discussion with chief about it also. And if we feel like too many people are starting to congregate down there, that goes...
Goes far.
That, that goes too far, we'll ask people to leave, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's reasonable.
Yes.
But, I mean, you've gotta think about all these people that are stuck at home and cannot do anything. And, you know, it, it, they're gonna go insane. We don't, I agree.
I don't think we need to do, I don't think that we need to do anything.
Okay.
I mean, I agree if, 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 if chief or another officer sees there's, you know, twenty people down there, then yes. That's one thing to make, you know, make at least half of them go, because we can only be in groups of ten. But other than that, I don't...
Okay, I don't think we need to do anything about that. All right. This next item has to do with community events and, um, gentlemen, I have to ask whether or not...
What I think I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna postpone it, even if it's after Christmas. Even if it's after Easter.
It usually is, huh?
I mean, if it gets to be July or August, but even if it's May or, you know, um, because that would be something fun for everybody to do after all this has been done. So I, I, at this point, instead of completely canceling it, I'm just gonna postpone it at this point. For the moment, if, if everybody's okay with that.
It's on hold.
Okay, I mean, it's a community event.
I mean, I don't have any problem canceling it, but, you know, hopefully, maybe by the end of April, May, things will be settled back down and it would just be something fun for the community and everybody to get together and do. David, mute your phone. Thank you. Uh, so if everybody's okay with that, I think.
You did.
Okay. Um, the same thing goes for the town hall meeting that's been scheduled. I don't wanna totally say we're not ever gonna have one, you know, because we, it's very beneficial for our people to get together and discuss those. So that also is probably, is going to be postponed. Anything else that you can think of at this point, um, regarding security and the health of our community that we need to think about postponing? If not, then I'm gonna kind of open this up to, to the citizen comment thing. Belinda has been, um, getting a couple of comments over there, I know. So I just want citizens to know that this item provides the opportunity for citizens to address the city council. By state law, comments by the mayor or council members on any item not on the agenda will be limited to statements of specific information given in response to an inquiry, a recitation of existing policy in response to an inquiry, or a, a proposal to replace the subject on the agenda for a future meeting. Belinda, do you have questions?
I do have some comments and questions. So the first one is from Nancy Huber, who lives on Alamo Road. Uh, she says, "I'm seeing a lot of people on social media taking steps to provide for their families during a potentially extended shelter-in-place order for the state or country. These steps include planting early harvest gardens and livestock. Can we temporarily relax the rules on livestock and law cabin to allow for a few chickens? I had to go to multiple stores for four days in a row before I was finally able to buy a dozen eggs on Sunday. I can't be the only one this has happened to. If we add a few chickens, we would have our own eggs and not be so dependent on a supply chain that has been in the process of breaking down."
We can't actually address that, because it's not on the agenda at all.
It's not, well, we can.
But we can put it on agenda for a future, for a, for a future meeting, because it's good.
So, shall we have it on the agenda for next week?
Yes, yes.
Everybody, okay.
Put it on.
We will put it on the agenda for next week.
The next comment is also from Nancy Huber. And, um, her comment is, "I am RN and I'm also trained in national incident management. I would love to see a committee of residents formed for emergency management and emergency response."
So our, our emergency response right now is, is with, is with the county. We don't really, we don't have, um, an official response team, um, in the city. But I would be open to discussing that with her. But I would be open to discussing that with her, if she would like to come in and visit with me. Or call me on the phone, don't have to visit, just call me on the phone. No visit, no visitation. City Hall is, City Hall is closed, you can't, can't visit me here. Okay. Next.
Um, the next comment is from Nancy Perk, and she doesn't have a question, she just wanted us to know the YouTube video's good, but the audio is very staticky. And I've had probably half a dozen, uh, comments like that during this session. And of course, we know our equipment, uh, we hope to upgrade it and, and get something better by the time we pass the.
Not only that, I think a cell phone would have worked even better.
We couldn't use a cell phone.
You have to have a thousand followers.
She is a seller.
YouTube restrictions.
How do these kids upload YouTube videos all the time?
It's not a live feed.
It's not a live feed. Oh, I think it's just, it's just videos.
And, and Mary, do you wanna, we will upload the, uh, the recording of this meeting also to YouTube, so anybody can watch it at their leisure.
We, we do, we do record, that's what we're talking about, our, we do record all of our, all of our meetings, and so, um. Chief Tucker says that, uh, following this meeting, he will upload the city's version, not the YouTube version, but the city's version of this, uh, of this meeting. So that if you, if you weren't able to hear it, you'll be able to hear it better. That was all there was. Okay? Anybody else have any other input? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Favor.
We are adjourned.
Bye, David.
Bye, David.
Hi, guys, God bless.
If you can't pay your water bill, you can't get a chicken.
What is the, what is the fine for this charging power?
Well, it could be up to five hundred dollars. You gotta, you wanna report somebody?
Um, they kind of just weren't themselves.
Oh, well, where do you shoot?
Snakes.
You know, uh, feral halms, snakes like that, I'll report them if I'm going.
Just warning, cause I, I killed a couple last night and there's, I found a bunch more and it's like, okay.
Yeah, I, I just let your neighbor know, just, he up here with fourteen or something popping in the night.
Well, there's nobody here.
And you're so close to the county, you're gonna, your gun shop over there all the time, you need it.
Oh, good lord, they got a back over yonder.
No, yeah, I wouldn't worry about it.
I'd never wanna get into doomsday with him.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wouldn't worry about that. Okay, I'm definitely gonna give you a gun though.
Nobody follows the ordinance that are there there, no.
Uh, you wait, everybody.
I know, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get registered. No, 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 this, this is only the city, this is only the thing that, the thing that we have, A H S L is. We got, when we got the cell phone, we got that through the first responders and, and the law enforcement. So that's the, that's the program that Verizon, that's why we can get such a decision.
Sure, sure, I just wanted to say thank you.
And we can get Verizon's cell, I mean, the office phones, we don't have to get internet.
The only reason that we don't, that, that Verizon and AT&T are not out here is cause they don't have any fiber optics out here. There's no fiber optics there, I mean, we can get, we can get signals and we can have cell phones for Verizon and AT&T, but we can't get a landline. So that's been a whole problem here, is that the landline.